Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 21st meeting of the Los Gatos Town Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Thank you, and good evening. Councilmember Sayak.
Here.
Councilmember Specter.
Here.
Councilmember Winnie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jensen.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Leon Artis.
Here. I'd like to invite up Elijah George this evening to lead us in our pledge, and I will share a few words with you about Elijah. Elijah is a fifth grader at Van Meter Elementary School. His activities include soccer, volleyball, music, piano, drums, guitar. So he's playing drums, piano, and guitar, but not all at once, I hope. But there are people who probably can do that. He likes to spend time with his friends, making movies on the iPad, singing in the church choir. He plays four-square, likes to do family movie night and game night with his family in the front row here, and his favorite subjects in school are reading and science. For his community service, as you can see, he is a Boy Scout. He participated in a program called Rise to Hunger, which made packets of food for the needy, and he also participated in planting or painting flower boxes at his church. Sounds like church maintenance. So I'd like you all to give a warm round of applause for Elijah.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our calendar is our consent calendar. Does any member of calendar wish to pull anything from consent this evening? I see none. Does any member of the public wish to pull anything from our consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll go for motion, Vice Mayor.
I move approval of the consent calendar consisting of items one through seven.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor. Aye, opposed, none. It passes unanimously. Next up is verbal communications. Anybody wish to speak on any item, not on our agenda this evening? I have no cards for a regular verbal, so we will move on to our public hearing, which is our annual budget. Presenting our report will be Ms. Laurel Privetti, our town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, on behalf of your town staff, we're very pleased to present to you the 2019-20 operating budget and capital improvement budget. As you can see, we have a wealth of staff with us this evening. I want to thank and commend them for all their hard work in putting this budget together, and this is the staff team that will help you this evening, answer your questions, and guide you as you move forward. Okay, there we go. Okay. As in previous years, our town budget is based on the core goals that the council sets when it reviews its strategic priorities. These include good governance, community character, quality public infrastructure, public safety, civic enrichment, and fiscal stability. We also, in January, considered strategic priorities, and this year we recognize that the council's ongoing work is really not done in one single project, that really it takes several years to accomplish things. And the first one, of course, is addressing unfunded pension and other post-employment benefit obligations, otherwise known as OPEB. The council has done quite a bit in this area, has, in fact, has allocated or programmed approximately $30.5 million to date. And what this translates into is that our OPEB obligation is approximately 55% funded. Our pensions for our miscellaneous employees is approximately 70% funded, and for our safety employees, it's essentially 74% funded. So we are well ahead of many jurisdictions within California in terms of addressing this In addition, our ongoing commitments include finishing the Almond Grove Streets, which should be done next month, continuing to improve our pavement condition index. So if council approves the CIP with the list of projects for next year, then we would, we should expect that our pavement condition index will increase to 70 or 72, so we're making steady progress there. We also want to continue to foster emergency preparedness. This is at the top of mind of many of our residents as we look forward to the future wildfire season and earthquakes and other concerns that might affect our community. In addition, we're continuing to prepare for Measure B, our fair share of the Valley Transportation Authority's ballot measure, so we want to make sure that we get our component of that investment. We also are continuing to address traffic in many different ways, including smart signals for which we have received outside funding. And then, of course, we're continuing to invest in our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, such as the Class Four project on Blossom Hill Road that council recently approved. And there are several others. Some of the new strategic priorities, we've already gotten started on, such as the comprehensive parking study that's now underway. We're exploring a variety of transportation demand management. We're going to be piloting the one-way street on Santa Cruz starting in July. And then, of course, we'd like to do additional vegetation management to protect our community. So these priorities essentially are reflected in the way our budget is distributed in terms of public safety, parks and public works, community development, et cetera. So the investment that we're making in the direct services mirror the priorities that you have set for our community. So as we look forward to the proposed budget for 1920, we have particular outcomes that we are hoping to achieve. First of all, we want to maintain our existing high level of service in all service areas, including police, public works, response to questions, next-day inspections, and our building division, et cetera. We do have some suggestions, but they're for very minimal staffing changes to meet our strategic needs, including adding capacity for emergency preparedness. We are also proposing that we would continue to make additional discretionary payments towards our pension and OPEB obligations. In addition, we are looking forward to investing in future downtown revitalization. So in your budget, you'll see $1 million as seed money towards a future streetscape project. We are also looking at investing in needed equipment replacement. We have a lot of deferred needs in this area, and then, of course, continue on with our Measure B. So what does this mean in terms of numbers? Our total budget in terms of expenses is $52 million. The total revenues coming from property tax, sales tax, and other sources is a little over $45 million. We are allocating from our reserves about $6.8 million. And again, this is, the purpose for these reserves is to make those investments that council believes is the priority. And then, even with this, we are projecting a surplus by the end of the fiscal year. So as I mentioned, our general fund reserves help us plan for our future. It's a way of putting aside money, so that way, when council is ready to make an investment, we can do so. So this chart, I know, is hard to read on the board, but it is in your budget book, and it does show that we are proposing to use reserves in order to meet some of those strategic needs. One of those strategic needs, of course, is our capital improvement process. And our capital improvement program is really where we're investing in that critical infrastructure that serves all of the community. And when we decide on which projects to fund each year, we, of course, start with the council's core goals and strategic priorities. We also look at what's already on the books, what's currently underway, how far along are we, and are those priorities still necessary? We also look at additional resources. As you know, the town has been very successful in receiving grant funding, so we look at all of that. And then we put together a whole list of projects, and I have to say that there are a lot of projects that don't make it into the CIP. So staff really does a lot of hard work to find those ones that really have the more immediate need. And then, of course, our planning commission reviews the CIP to ensure that it is consistent with our general plan and is implementing the goals and policies of the general plan. For our five-year capital improvement program, the total budget is approximately $48.2 million. The first year of the program is $28.4 million, of which carry forward, which means money from previous years, is $16.2, and new funding is $12.2 million. And if we look at the capital projects, we have some one-time projects that are currently in progress, and that is the bulk of our program. We also have our annual programs, such as the slory, the seals for our streets, et cetera, and then about 22% are proposed or pending projects for your consideration. And we look at how it's distributed against project type. Almost $23 million is going to our streets, so that includes bicycle, pedestrian, as well as street maintenance. Parks, almost $2 million, and then public facilities, about $3.8 million. So you can see the priority has really been our streets. Capital maintenance, of course, is a big issue for us, so that includes pavement, curb ramps, weed abatement, as well as more proactive vegetation management, as well as making sure that we're taking care of the assets that are relatively new but still need care, such as new carpet for our library. In addition, you'll find the parking study is in the CIP, as well as the one-way street pilot. Our school bus pilot is continuing, emergency preparedness, and then we have a variety of Americans with Disability Act upgrades that are definitely needed for town hall, as well as other buildings. As mentioned in the staff report, we have approximately $2.9 million of additional one-time monies for your consideration this evening. You have received desk items and addenda that identify a variety of requests coming from our community and other partners, and so you have the opportunity, if you wish, this evening, to provide us direction. And up on the slide, we just want to remind you about some of the past direction or potential direction you might want to consider based on earlier conversations. So again, pension and OPEB investments is certainly one option. Another is continue to make more street repairs to further improve our pavement condition index, continue to provide more seed funding for the downtown streetscape project. And then, a couple of sessions ago, we talked about downtown beautification options in terms of power washing, planter boxes, and downtown maintenance, including perhaps funding a part-time staff member who would be handling a lot of these issues. And we were asked at that time to bring back downtown beautification as a potential project for use of these one-time funds. Or council may have other ideas in terms of how it might want to fund those, these items. Whatever your direction is, we will be taking your ideas and essentially putting it together into the resolutions that you will be considering at your June 4th meeting. So this evening, you will be asked to consider the proposed operating budget. Within it, our community grants, your, our Arts and Culture Commission, as well as our Community and Senior Services Commission have recommendations for you in the budget book. Staff is prepared to go into more detail about the grant proposals. And then, again, there are additional one-time monies that are being proposed for distribution. We would also really appreciate your direction on the CIP and projects. We have a text amendment, if you will, to the general fund reserve policy to allow us the flexibility as to how to use the monies within that reserve. And as I mentioned, all of your direction will come back to you in June 4th in the form of final resolutions. And with that, want to just again recognize the staff that's here to answer your questions and assist you this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Privetti. Are there any questions for staff at this time from council? All right. Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. The first card I have is Tyler Taylor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you very much for some time this evening. I'm here today, we did submit a grant application for a community grant for the Saratoga Area Senior Coordinating Council. Again, I'll announce myself. My name is Tyler Taylor. I'm the executive director of the Saratoga Area Senior Coordinating Council and also leading of the Ride Transportation Program for Los Gatos, Saratoga, and Montessorino. I'd like to spend a couple of minutes here talking about the Ride program. In the proposed budget, there has been a cut to the previous funding for this program. Los Gatos provides $17,000 for the past two years in partial funding of the Ride Transportation Program for seniors in this area. And in this proposed budget, it's reduced to $10,000 and also reclassified to a one-time contribution. So I wanted to read a brief statement from one of our passengers from Los Gatos. "I had to quit driving in November of 2017, and if Ride was no longer an option, I'd have a real problem because there is no transportation. I would have to go back to Uber or Lyft, which is very expensive, and I would not be able to use it as often as I use Ride. Ride has allowed me, at the age of 80, to continue doing everything I was doing when I was younger. I can't say enough good things about Ride. I love them all. They have all become a part of my family." Ride is a critical program that helps maintain your existing high levels of service for your residents. We've delivered 700 rides to isolated seniors in Los Gatos just this fiscal year. Since we moved Ride headquarters to Los Gatos just a few short months ago, we've experienced a 27% increase in the number of rides delivered to seniors living in Los Gatos. We have vehicles on the way, which has been a hurdle and an obstacle in our volunteer recruitment efforts. One of Ride's strongest supporters and champions, Mike Wasserman, your colleague, is submitting an inventory item in this year's budget for the purchase of vehicles for the program. As you know, we have not increased our budget for this program, even through the increase in the number of rides that we've been delivered. And so this additional funding will help us with some vehicles from the VTA that'll help us recruit more drivers. Year-to-date, 20% of the total number of rides for the entire program are being delivered to the town of Los Gatos, so that's a one-fifth share, and there are five communities involved. We are requesting the full $17,000, and we would really appreciate for this program to consider it ongoing as opposed to one-time. The need for people does not decrease, it just increases. As people age and as they become more isolated and cut off from the community that they are a part of, there's just a cascade of things that happen to their health, their well-being, and their situation. And a program like this is very cost-effective, it's run very well, and we care about what we're doing for the community, as evidenced by us moving to Los Gatos for the purpose of establishing a footprint here and making sure that people have more access to programs like these. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We have a question for you.
Mr. Taylor, thank you for coming today. I appreciate the presentation. I recall when we started this a couple of years ago, we had talked about this being a pilot and that we were gonna, we were going to look at the metrics that determined whether or not we were successful in this pilot. So one of the quick questions I wanted to ask of you was, how many of the 700 rides this year were from, I guess they call it unduplicated? How many individual residents are taking advantage of this? And when you say the percent increase from the previous year, what are those in terms of numbers?
So we have about 70 passengers from Los Gatos who use the program on a regular basis. When I mentioned the increase of 27%, that's since we moved our headquarters for the Ride Program from Saratoga to Los Gatos, which was around the end of last calendar year. So it's been about five months or so since then. I do not have a whole lot of numbers because I knew I only had three minutes today, but tomorrow, Josh Sello, West Valley Community Services Executive Director, and myself are presenting to the West Valley Mayors and Managers Meeting, and we have a full presentation to discuss very fine details about the numbers. One thing I'd like to do, though, I feel like we've had a little bit of a disconnect when it comes to reporting the successes and the data of the program to your council and to your community. The way our agreement was structured with the county was that the county would provide that information to you folks, and I think that some things have been lost in the shuffle. I want to offer to the council, I would be happy to personally come here every quarter and report on the Ride program as a non-agendized item for three minutes or as an agendized item, to keep you in the loop and informed about what's happening and to show the real impact that this program does have for your community.
One more question.
Thank you. Are you able to tell me, so by virtue of comparison, how many individual, excuse me, how many individual riders you have in Saratoga?
In Saratoga, we do have more riders than we have here, although I can't tell you off the top of my head how many there are. Roughly, we're all in the same, about the same range. We have 65 here. We don't have more than 100 to 110 out of Saratoga. When it comes to Los Gatos, the total numbers, out of the five communities, Los Gatos has been about the fourth in utilization, although there's not more of a 10% gap between all of the different communities when it comes to the usage. And so us moving here and putting the headquarters here was the attempt to increase our number of passengers and drivers. One of the things that we have experienced also a great deal of is lack of our ability to meet the demand. We have calls every day that we have to let them know other transportation options that may be available because we need more vehicles and more drivers. And so with the additional funding offered through the inventory item through Mr. Supervisor Wasserman, we'll be able to acquire more vehicles that will reduce our hurdles when it comes to recruiting volunteer drivers. Our organization, SASE, has also invested heavily in this community. Our Senior Services Division Manager just recently completed the Los Gatos Leadership Program with the Chamber of Commerce. We attend regularly the CSSC meetings and also other commission meetings as well. Tara, our Senior Services Coordinator for the town of Los Gatos, was our original Ride Transportation Coordinator. She's here with me tonight. So we really are vested in Los Gatos. We're not really interested in going anywhere. We want to stay here and continue to provide the highest levels of service and to help you meet your need to service your community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Sorry, one more. I think you said, Los Gatos is fourth out of five communities that participate in this for people who use it, and 20% of all the rides. And I'm wondering, our $17,000 contribution, I don't know if you can answer it, if I need to ask our staff, how does, is, do we pay 20% or do we pay more than 20%?
Thank you for that question. You pay 7% of the total budget for this program, which is $250,000, and it's remained that same amount over the past two years.
Councilmember Sayak.
Are you aware if the county and VTA's contribution, is it an ongoing commitment or is it similar to ours where it's during the duration of the pilot period?
Thank you. The county's commitment is ongoing. When it comes to VTA, as you all may know or may not know, VTA, after their first year, because of their budgetary situation, they pulled their funding from this program, but they did not pull their support or their technical help. We still did get training from them, and we've been in conversations with them about vehicles all along the way. Now with the access to Measure B funding becoming available, there are grant programs that are opening up through the VTA. We're also in touch with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission about a grant called the 5310 Mobility Management Grant. And so we're very active and we're serious about keeping this program alive. The support for the program definitely is there from the community. We hope that it remains there from Los Gatos as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you so much.
Next is Kelly Lewis Brz...Brzowski.
Hello, I'm Kelly Lewis Brzowski, and I'm here representing the Los Gatos High School, New Millennium Foundation. For those of you that don't know what the New Millennium Foundation is, we are the 100% nonprofit educational foundation. 100% of our proceeds and donations go directly into Los Gatos High School. What people, many people don't know is that what makes the high school such a gem and treasure in our town is what we like to call the LG difference, and it's really, to date, has been at the hands of many parents in our community who have given so generously to our high school. What most people are surprised to find out is that only 97, 97% of our district, high school district school budget, funds the buildings that our students go to school in and the teacher's salary. Only 3% of the high school district budget actually goes to support programming in the schools. So that's what makes the contributions from the Los Gatos High School New Millennium Foundation so important. For perspective, our, the New Millennium Foundation has been annually providing just under about $450,000 into the high school every single year. This year, we actually had a record $700,000 in grants that we've provided into our local high school program. We would not have at LGHS our robotics program, our experiential and hands-on science labs, our advanced science research program, our graphic design program, our engineering program, our music production program, any of our online homework tools and aids that we use in math and physics without the New Millennium Foundation donations. So this year, our robotics team just went to the world compet, actually made the world competition and was in the top 40 teams in the entire world. Our advanced science research program at Los Gatos High School just won 22 awards at the Silicon Valley Synopsis Science and Technology Fair, and our science department chair, Mrs. Kathy Messenger, was awarded the second year in a row the most outstanding science teacher in all of the Silicon Valley Science Fair. This is, and we are competing with some of the top private high schools in the region at these fairs. So why am I here tonight? We decided for the first, for the very first time, we were made aware of the community grants, and we thought it would be appropriate to apply for grants at, with the town. We applied to both the Arts and Education and the Human Services Committees, and the arts, you, there's the $3,000 recommendation in the Arts and Education. We didn't receive anything from Human Services. Unfortunately, the night of public comment, I had a family emergency and was unable to attend and find a replacement. What we wanted to partner with the town on is our robotics program has a $46,000 laser cutter that they're looking to for next school year, and what we wanted to do is have a partnership with the town where our foundation, the New Millennium Foundation, would pay for half of that laser cutter and the town would pay for the other half. So what I'm here this evening requesting is a one-time additional $17,000 so that we could have the full $20,000 and have a partner together on this laser cutter. I think partnerships are super important. Go ahead.
Ms. Brzowski, thank you. The three minutes are up. Let's see if you have any questions from our council. Let's see if you have any questions from our council. It's seeing none. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Maureen Capon-Javie.
I think you make sure it's plugged in while I come down.
Yeah.
This gotta be working. These slides are because.
While they're fixing the equipment, if anybody else wants to speak this evening, please have your cards ready. Bring them forward to the clerk's desk. Don't all rush up at the last moment.
Mr. Mayor, through the mayor, if I might, ask a question?
I have a question from Vice Mayor Jensen.
My question is, if your presentation that you're going to put on the overhead is the same as the desk item, we could perhaps all use that because we have it.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. So you have these materials in front of you, I think, so if you just want to, it's really visuals. The rest of us can enjoy the pretty pictures. Okay, well, I'll just start. My name is Maureen Capon-Javie. I'm the Executive Director of New Museum Los Gatos, and I'm here this evening to request $20,000 from the town's 2019-2020 Proposed Operating Budget Surplus Fund account. The funds will be used to support development costs for new and expanded programs at Numu, scheduled for rollout later this summer and introduced at a community event in September. We are designating more floor space in our lower-level floor for art-making, art instruction, and art and history education. New and expanded makerspace and studio spaces are being created to offer classes, workshops, drop-in, and self-directed programs for children, youth, and adults. Also with a focus, additional focus on seniors within the adult category. The primary goal of this undertaking is to offer more fee-based, revenue-generating programs that are becoming increasingly popular with our members in wider communities. By reconfiguring the use of our lower-floor level, we feel that we'll be able to adjust our own operating budget goals and business model to take advantage of new revenue-generating opportunities. We are also working towards making the museum's permanent art history collection, and by extension, Los Gatos history, more accessible to the community. Three projects are planned: cataloging the Numu collections of over 3,000 artifacts, creating a collections prep and demo lab, and developing a series of year-round related support and education programs in partnerships with area historians, art conservationists, and academics. These projects will also provide fee-based programs and experience for members and visitors. We are currently also preparing a grant application to the County Board of Supervisors. The Historic Grant Program is a new, one-time-only program that supports projects that acknowledge and celebrate our county's untold stories and histories. The grant submission is due in July, and if awarded, funds become available in December of this year. We anticipate receiving funding for this grant, and we'll use those funds to build on the seed funding supported, support awarded by the Town of Los Gatos through its surplus fund if you choose to make that allocation. In your packet supporting this application is a draft budget estimate for one-time materials costs associated with the expansion of the makerspace and studio programs. Those numbers don't include shipping and labor costs. Also, concept illustrations that you have in your packet that I would have been showing this evening, and also program flyers and materials of our hands-on art-making programs and classes for kids and adults. These are the programs that we currently offer, and these are the kinds of programs that we want to expand. On behalf of the Numu Board of Directors and Staff, thanks for your time. If you have any questions?
We have a question from Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Numu did make a request for donation and received a recommendation of $6,000. Is that correct? I have a recommendation of $6,000 to the Los Gatos Museum Association.
Is this through the?
To support their museum explorer program?
Is this through the Arts and Culture Commission grants?
Yes.
Yes, I don't know. We submitted, I think, a request for $7,000, and we received six, I guess it was $6,000. I actually can't remember the exact number, and that's for, I believe it's for part of the collections program and our art explorer program, and maybe those two.
That's fine. That's what it was.
Right.
So the recommendation is for $6,000. So you did make that request. Now, the request you're making now for $20,000 for a different reason, was that also submitted to the Arts Commission?
No.
Okay, so this is new to the council?
This is new.
And if you were to proceed with this project, would all other costs be assumed by the museum? I mean, I'm talking about the cost of the renovation, the cost, you're going to have to get a conditional use permit. All of those costs, is that something you would be handling independently?
Yes, and there won't be any conditional, it's, it's not construction in terms of knocking down walls and, you know, and anything that's going to require that kind of construction. But all the, all the other costs, we will be finding other funding for, one of which is the Historic Grants Program that we're submitting an application for in July, other donor support, other program support that we are building, as well as grants that we're writing. So yes, we would be taking care of the rest.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
A follow-up on Councilwoman Specter's questions. Our staff report indicates that you are you. The museum is recommended to get $6,000 from a community arts and education grant for museum explorer program, classroom students, and support work in the permanent collection. In the community and human services grants, there's a recommendation for $1,000 for seed funding of an art and history senior explorer program. So that's a total of $7,000 that are already recommended to go to the museum?
Right. Yes, that's the seven.
And this is over and above that?
Yes. So these are one-time, these are one-time costs, and I think we included a budget page in that packet, and I think there's $50,000 worth of furnishings and other materials. And there's one budget item in there, which is $24,000 and change, and those are one-time costs. So these are more costs that I guess the town would look at as build-out costs, or, you know, walls and lighting that would stay in the, in the space if we were to leave the space. It wouldn't be things we would take away. I don't know what the correct term I'm trying to come up with, but that's what that should, is funding.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, given that you're talking about fixtures, et cetera, I just have to ask you, where are you on your utility payments to the town?
Well, we're actually doing really well with our utility payments. We have an agreement with the town to have a set $4,200 a month, and then there's a true-up period in June and December where the balance of that will be billed to us, and when, then we negotiate a payment schedule from there. We're current on our rent, and we're make, and we're currently making our regular $4,200 payments, and the deficit of, I think, $21,000 in utility payments that are being charged to the museum, we are making payments on those every month, and I think that number is now below $15,000.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next speaker, Truder, excuse me, Trudy Burling. Burling, sorry.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time. I'm Trudy Burling. I'm the President of the Board of Directors for Live Oak Senior Nutrition and Service Center. Our name is a mouthful. This program began 45 years ago this month, which is just really incredible to me. It's began as a partnership between the County of Santa Clara, the Town of Los Gatos, and we're housed at a subsidized rate at the Los Gatos United Methodist Church. And for those 45 years, we have served an average, and I'm really bad with numbers, but our average has been somewhere over 1,000 meals a month for 45 years. And I used my calculator, that's over 540,000 meals that we have served. That's a lot. Think about that, over a half a million meals. When we started this program, the meal is kind of the incentive to hook people and get them to come in. This is a program for seniors over 60 years of age. And what we discovered over the years, and what I think people who work in the field of seniors has discovered, is that while the meal is especially important for low-income seniors, it's equally important, and even more so, for the socialization and the hours that are provided for seniors that are living in isolation to have socialization. To that end, we have speakers, we have chair yoga, we have bingo, not so much anymore. We have different people that come in and program, so we find that for some people, one fellow said to me, if I didn't have this program to come to, I wouldn't get out of bed in the morning. And so the socialization, we're realizing, is even more important than the meal. And to that end, we have been happy partners with the Town of Los Gatos, with the County of Santa Clara, and with the church, and we thank you for your support for all of that time. We cannot do it without the partnership. We work with a very limited budget, and we work with a very limited staff. We don't have any full-time members, but we do have 37 regular volunteers every month, 37 regular volunteers. That's how we really are able to stretch the dollars. I'd like to invite you all to our gala celebration. You'll be getting individual invitations, but on the 12th, nope, sorry, the 13th of August, at 11 o'clock, we're going to have lunch at the senior center across the way. And we'll have prizes and cake and all sorts of fun. Thank you so much for your time and your support.
Thank you, Ms. Burling. Next speaker is Jan Schwartz.
Evening, thank you. I'm Jan Schwartz. I'm here as a private citizen, but also, full disclosure, as a member of the Board of Numu. And what I really want to talk about is the value that I see in having this museum for our town and why I'm supporting it on the board, and hope that you will as well. Maureen has, I believe there's a slide in your packet about the visitors to the museum. We have over, have had over 8,000 visitors in a year, and almost three-quarters of those are not from the Town of Los Gatos. We ask people to sign in and put their zip codes, where they're from. There are many that are not even from California. It is a great attraction for the town. I always bring visitors to Numu when people come, you've got to come and see our museum. We have programs that attract artists from the area and from also out of state. If you come to the exhibit that is there right now, on the shoulders of giants, the Atelier exhibit is outstanding, and the students are just amazing. And these are students, adults, seniors, and high school and younger. We have programs, we had Elijah here before, we have scout programs, badge programs. It's a great value to the town, and we are trying to be self-supportive. It is always a challenge to get funding for the arts, but we recognize that one of our biggest attractions is the programs and the education that we are providing. And the build-out would be particularly important in helping us raise additional funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Fishler.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Fishler. I'm the Development Director of Parents Helping Parents. We're a nonprofit focused on helping families with children with special needs. We've been doing so since 1976. When families, raising children, as you all know, is challenging, when you layer in the complexity of raising a child with special needs, it just becomes that much more challenging, that much more emotionally challenging, financially challenging, intellectually challenging, you name it. We provide a wide range of services to parents, ranging from educational advocacy classes so they know how to work with their child's school, to get the special education that their child is legally entitled to. We have classes on how to successfully apply for public benefits such as SSI, which is Supplemental Security Income, and IHSS in home support services, which you can receive from the county. We have 12 different parent support groups. We have mentor-parent support groups, so if you, sometimes all you want to do is be able to talk to another parent who may be going through similar circumstances, and we can match you up with a parent to do so. I think one of the things, maybe the most important thing about PHP and what we do is almost everybody on our program staff is the parent of a child with special needs themselves. So when you're talking to us, you are talking to someone who has a shared experience and can help you navigate the various educational or social systems of care that are needed to raise your child. I should also note, because we've been around for 43 years, we literally have had families grow up with us, and so it no longer may be about what kind of education is your child receiving and learning how to work with your child's school, then it becomes more a case of, where's my child going to live? What is a special needs trust, and how do I set it up? What does conservatorship mean? All those things. As a matter of fact, one of our most popular support groups is our Parents of Adult Children Support Group, because they are, again, facing different issues. We had asked for $6,000, and the commission, I know, had challenging budget decisions to make, and were only able to recommend $3,000. I respectfully ask that you consider granting the full $6,000 to us, as the money will go towards helping Los Gatos families. We have a long relationship with the Town of Los Gatos, so you have been very kind and funded us in the past, and we have deep ties with the town. Two of our board members actually live in Los Gatos. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Mr. Fishler, historically, what has Los Gatos funded you?
Last year, we did not apply for a grant. Two years ago, I believe you funded at a $1,000 level. We had asked for $5,000, and I think the year before that was a similar amount.
Okay, we have another question. Councilmember Specter.
Following up from that, why didn't you apply for a grant last year?
Truth?
No, I want you to lie.
No. Honestly, the grant application process in the past was rather laborious, and I have to commend you guys for making the process much easier this time around. And after getting only $1,000 in the cost to administer it, we made a decision last year not to apply. The need hasn't gone away.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Seok.
Thank you. With the deficit of $3,000, what could you do with that extra $3,000?
I think what we are facing is the fact that serving our adult population, our adult children population in particular, is something that honestly, we don't have, we don't get funding for from any government agency. And like I said, that population funding for from any government agency. And like I said, that population is just growing. And helping families understand their housing options, or how to get the kind of day programs in place that their adult child needs is something that we can do with that additional money. Because without it, we are really stretched to serve our adult children.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you. What is your annual budget?
Our total annual budget is two point seven million dollars.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Seok.
Similar to the question I asked of the first speaker, could you give us a magnitude of how many residents of ours that you serve?
Yeah. Last year, we served close to seventy-five residents with three hundred services. So typically, when we serve families, we're serving them multiple times. To give you a sense, there's over five hundred children enrolled in special ed in Los Gatos. And then, again, you have the adult population as well. So we, without, we served well over ten percent of the families that are enrolled in special ed here in Los Gatos. And would love to serve more.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pete Siemens.
Good evening. My name is Pete Siemens. I'm your representative on the Mid-Penn Open Space District Board. We have a request in relating to Bear Creek Stables. And probably you all know, we're about ready to open one part of our Bear Creek Open Space Preserve. The website's going to be open for the public on the eighth. And I think you've all maybe gotten invitations for the seventh, for our VIP and partner opening on the seventh. But the public opening is the eighth. One of the things that we did on the planning for Bear Creek is we defined a process. We had a lot of public input. We developed a plan for the stables. The stables are really up on Bear Creek, or more than just renting horses, stapling. They have a number of programs, ad hoc, they've run over the years, very extensive group of, and evolved group of volunteers. So they do a lot of programs. They run programs for veterans, and they run programs for school kids, and largely for the mountain areas and for schools around in Los Gatos. And that's really why I wanted to focus on, is why we're asking for the money. Our stable plan basically exceeded our allocated money on our last bond issue by well over double. So we've kind of pulled back and said, we're going to finance right now deferred maintenance. So after the deferred maintenance, that's what we're currently pulling permits for now, is completed, then we're going to be looking into a fundraiser over time, along with the Friends of Bear Creek Redwoods. It's a, it's a nonprofit, to do the long-term programs that will allow us to increase public involvement. And public involvement largely involves school kids. And so, the, the money would be for, it's like a one-time request. We're looking for ground money and for equipment to enhance the public access, largely, I could say largely drilled for children, part of, part of the program. We're not asking for any ongoing money. It's a one-time, because ongoing, these programs are managed by volunteers, run by volunteers. We oversee it at the district. So we're not looking for ongoing, just a one-time. So, any questions? I'm sorry we're late in the game, but we wanted to get on your, on your radar screens anyway.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you. Although I think you just answered my question, did you make an application to the Arts Commission?
Not yet, no. This, we just found out of what was going on. Our staff did. And we turned in a letter, which you have
Right.
tonight. So, we're, like I say, we're kind of late in the process. But I also wanted to make sure you focused on our opening, because it's a big deal for, for everybody on the eighth.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Siemens, I have your letter. And looking at the staff report, your letter talks about deferred maintenance. And just now, you were talking about providing access. Are you talking about construction?
I'm sorry.
Are you, is the money to be used for construction, deferred maintenance and construction?
It's not part of the maintenance. It would be used for, after we've finished upgrading the facility up.
Construction to upgrade your facility?
Yeah. So it would be after that's done, then we'll be looking for money that would be available for, also to help our volunteers, what they feel they need to enhance our public, public operations, for inviting the school kids and whatever, and whatever they feel they need. There's some ground things they would like to make, to build, that are not part of the maintenance, but there may be some construction involved.
Okay. Because I'm looking at our staff report, and it says the grants are not intended to fund construction or maintenance of physical space or objects.
Yeah, will not be for maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Siemens, what is the historical significance of the stables?
The stables have been there since early nineteen hundreds. We inherited the stables when we bought them, bought the property. And this has been under lease. There's a stable operator that runs the actual leasing of the spaces for the horses. And then there's a very involved, pardon me, a very involved group of people who basically are involved with leasing horses up there, renting space. But they also run the school kids programs. And it's, it's been, over the years, there's been a big variety, but a lot of, they do, they do a number of things with school kids. And they run some programs for veterans where they're therapy. Horses make really good therapy for veterans that have had problems. And they've done some rescue horse work. But most, most of the activity has been involved of getting, giving kids lessons, or bringing them up and just letting them see the horses.
Has it been continually operated since the early nineteen hundreds?
Yes. As far as I know, it's never, never stopped.
Okay.
It was operating when, before we bought it. And we just maintained that the, the board made a commitment that we want to keep the stables. It's, it's one of the few affordable stables in the, in the area. Prices on our, our stables. And we want to, one of the things the boards are very involved is, we don't want to put so much money in that we have to, over time, in facilities, to get it to the point where people can't afford to have their horses. So we're doing, we want to do basic maintenance. And then we're looking, we're going to be doing a fundraising campaign afterwards, to do additional money for what, whatever the Friends group, we're really kind of taking our cue from the Friends, that are volunteers up there, or what they need in order to run a public program.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Trin Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Trin Nguyen. And that's Robert Ferrari. We're here on behalf of Los Gatos Recreation. I just want to commend the Senior Service Commission on their daunting task to adopt the final recommendations for allocating the funds for the human service community grants. Everyone recognizes that there are many worthy applicants and great needs in our community, which needs to be balanced with the limited amount of pool of funds. We just wanted to say that we're truly grateful and appreciative to be amongst the organization that received the recommended grant approval, given that there are so many deserving recipients doing so much great work for our community. Your grant approval not only speaks volumes in the support of the impact that we create for the community, but also the continuous partnership and the shared responsibilities in creating a greater connection for the people we serve. These programs put us one step closer to becoming more sustainable through this collaborative effort. On behalf of the seniors and the youth we serve, we have our sincere appreciation, and we hope to continue this partnership for many years to come.
Thank you.
Quick and short.
Next speaker, Marie Cameron.
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. This is all good? My name is Marie Cameron. I'm a Los Gatos artist. And I'm speaking in support of the Numu measure, proposal to have supporting its, expansion of its Atelier and Makerspace Program. I wanted to speak mostly about how proud I am to be in Los Gatos, a town of our size, having this magnificent museum, which, from my perspective, it's bringing local artists to show with Bay Area artists, national artists, and even international artists on a similar plane. We're bringing our students to come in and see this. We're having the Art Now Program, where the students, they ply through a jury process that they would have to do for any of the shows that they would go on in their careers to do. They're learning these very vital skills. And we're really on the map now in the way that we haven't been. So I've been involved with Gallery Twenty-four, Los Gatos Art Association, Whitney Modern. I love all of the arts that we have in our community. But Numu is unique. And we're getting curators that are coming from LA and all over to bring their artists to stay in our community. We're having masters of the Atelier come and present to our community, along with our local artists who are masters. And they're staying, and they're, you know, renting hotels, they're eating in our restaurants, we're entertaining them. And we're getting articles written about the fantastic shows that we're having there. It's really, really rare for a town of our size. And I thank you for whatever support you give to the museum, because it's, it will pay off in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Dancer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, members of the community. My name is Jordan Dancer, and I am the Grants Manager at Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence. Domestic violence is gender-based violence, and it violates the human rights of women and girls, limiting their opportunities, participation, and advancement. For forty-eight years, we have been providing services, starting with a shelter that was, and a hotline that was housed in a garage, to services now that address stability, safety, self-sufficiency. The services we are asking for support of, of course, is our shelter for women and their children who are fleeing abuse, our Community and Systems Advocacy Program, which offers walk-in crisis counseling, legal advocacy, client assistance, and other supports. And for our support groups, one we have here in Los Gatos, it was recently, over the years actually, held at Saint Mary's Church. And we've recently moved it over to the Jewish Family Community Center. Have you distributed those flyers? Oh, thank you. I'm very excited to say that through other funding, we are now able to hire a outreach and volunteer coordinator who will be charged with doing more outreach in our community, to not only make people aware of the services that are available at Nextdoor, but also to help educate the community about the impact, not only to the individual, but also to our community as a whole, whether it's in rising health costs, lost wages, lost production at work, and just the general overall health of our community. For years, we have been doing intervention crisis work, and we are now branching out into prevention work. In the fall, we will begin a program called Coaching Boys and Men that will be offered at two, what, one high school district in East San Jose. We will be teaching coaches how to work with young athletes to help them shift community thinkings about treatment of women. We're also engaged with the healthcare sector, because in addition to the physical abuse that we see that occurs to victims, there's also long-term healthcare issues, both in mental and emotional health, diabetes, health, other health risk. So I thank the recommendation for funding for us, and I hope that you will approve it. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Seeing no questions, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Catherine Summers.
Good evening, Council. I heard there was some surplus funding available, so I thought I would come and make my case. First of all, before I start, though, I did want to give a shout out to the Senior Services Commission and to Tyler Taylor. I think the seniors in this town are having more fun than they've ever had before because of him. So I hope that you will take note of that. And then I also did want to talk about Numu real quickly, because as the Visitor Information Center, we have visitors daily coming in and asking where they can go in Los Gatos. And one of the places we send them all the time is down to our prized museum. And I think that is a, a real asset to our community. And I hope you'll understand that as well. I did want to give everybody a sneak preview of some of the street poll banners. This is just one of, a set of four that are going to be going up. A hundred of these are being made, and they're going to be all along the Boulevard, all downtown on Main Street and North Santa Cruz. And this was due to a five-thousand-dollar one-time grant that you gave to the Chamber of Commerce last year. And we really appreciated that. As many of, as you all know, and as many of you out here know as well, you fund us for the Visitor and Information Center in town. And that helps cover, it's forty-thousand dollars, that helps cover the rent of the space. We have the one only public bathroom in the whole town. And that's for a staff person to answer the telephone. And if you hear our weekly telephone calls of, you know, just from question, I mean, we're kind of like the Yellow Pages. I mean, people call us with all sorts of questions. So we really, we take that very seriously about what we do to help promote the town. These banners were one, one way that we promote the town. But we are finding more and more, and I'm even reluctant to actually say that the only way we're really going to serve this town right, as a Visitor Information Center, is to do some destination marketing. And by that, I mean that we are going to have to do some online marketing. And that's the Instagram and the Facebooks. I mean, to really, I haven't wanted to say it, but print media, radio marketing, all of the things that we've all thought have worked for so long, they just don't anymore. And there's studies out there that show this. So we've been doing a lot of research, and we found that we really need to go in that direction. And for that, I'm asking for a one-time, one-time investment into the Visitor and Information Center, so that we can really build out our online presence. It will be a partnership with our Los Gatos Food and Wine Group, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. So the three parties would be partners and putting in for a grant for our online marketing, social media marketing program.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Seok.
Ms. Summers, I just got the email today, so I didn't have a chance to really look at the details of it. So it's a three-way partnership?
Yes.
And so is it divided three ways, the cost as well?
Yes, pretty equally, the three parts. So the town would put in fifteen thousand, the Los Gatos Food and Wine Group, which is, you know, separate really from the Chamber of Commerce. They have, although they're, most of them are members of the Chamber, they have their own marketing fund. And they have agreed that they would like to put money into this effort as well. And the Chamber would as well, would match all that. On that, we have, last year, we met with the town and had decided that we would coin it Experience Los Gatos. And so that will be the umbrella of the, of the whole program. So it really is a true partnership with the town, that everyone's.
And so this is a one-time allocation to, to create the brand and the strategy?
Correct.
And then after that, it then becomes, who will maintain and?
So after that, the hope is that this P-Bid, which we had a meeting today, a very, a pretty successful meeting, and we're really, we're making some headway. And I think, I mean, that is exactly what a P-Bid funds, is destination marketing. And so this is one of those items that would fall completely onto them. I just think that, you know, I had a discussion with one of the council, one of the council people today. And, you know, I said, oh, shouldn't we build the town first and then do the marketing later? You know, or kind of clean the town up? I think it really, we have to be simultaneous in this effort to bring people back into town and really create, or rediscover Los Gatos as a destination. And so I think we have to be intentional. And so I think we have to be intentional in where we're spending our dollars. I don't think we can do one before the other. I think we have to do them both at the same time.
Vice Mayor.
Summers, good evening. I've been a big proponent of doing various things downtown, and I've also been an early proponent of the BID. And it strikes me that a branding campaign is perfect for a BID. And the town has put aside $1 million for downtown improvements. We've done seed money for the BID. We've given you $5,000 for those. And so my question to you is, why doesn't the BID do the branding? And why don't, I mean, the town has done a lot to show. I know that the business community has thought, well, we haven't supported you over the years, but we sure have in the past few years. So I guess where's the partnership from those business owners?
Well, so for sure, the BID would take this on. I think, again, I've said this a couple times at these meetings, there is a stopgap that we have to fill. I mean, if that BID P-Bid is successful, we won't see any of those dollars until October of 2020. So we have between now and then to figure, you know, to do something in the interim. And I think we really need to start this branding campaign. We've sort, you know, we've landed on this Experience Los Gatos, they're using that in all of their marketing this summer for the one-way pilot program and on all the K-Rails and, you know, so we're going to, I think actually I have the logo right here of the Experience Los Gatos. So we're going to build upon that and hope that we will start driving locals and visitors alike to that Instagram account to just kind of see what's happening on a daily basis in Los Gatos. And it really is, it's on a daily basis, what music's going on, what happy hours there are, what's happening at the farmer's market. And again, I mean, it's new to me, being a little bit of the older generation, but people these days like to see it every day of what's happening in a town. And I think, I think this is money well-spent towards really building that Los Gatos as a destination and to come here and experience it.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on that, since this seed money would just be to develop the conceptual development, but not implementation, when would you anticipate the implementation?
It's fully, it's, it's, this seed money is not necessarily seed money, it is just part of the campaign, and so it's a full year of a campaign to market Los Gatos as a destination and to experience Los Gatos, love Los Gatos, it's kind of all those things wrapped together. So there's no, it's not an implementation.
Okay, so then when would we foresee the product of this marketing?
June 5th, after you accept this proposal. Yeah, we're ready to go. I mean, to actually be fully fair, we are already in a, the Chamber is already consulting with a firm, and they're going to speak in a little bit, just, just to tell you more about social media. But we've already launched this campaign, it's just a matter of how far we can go with it. And I will go as far as I can with the dollars that I have in my marketing budget at the Chamber. But I also have a responsibility always to my members first, and then the Visitor Information Center, I mean, and I understand, you know, there's two different bodies there, but if this over here, this Visitor Information Center and Destination Los Gatos isn't working, there is no Chamber, and all of my members understand that as well. So it's just a very fine balance that I have to kind of appease this group while really elevating this to be, to make us all a little bit better and stronger.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Derek Thomas. That's the last card I have this evening. So if you would like to speak, please bring it forward now.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Derek Thomas. I am the co-founder of Polygon Market. We are a creative branding agency here in town. I'm here in support of Catherine of the Creator, Experience Los Gatos kind of branding campaign. So I could talk to you until I'm read in the face about how important social media is, but for the, in the case that we have very limited time here, I'm just going to spat out a few stats that I think are important. This is regarding Facebook and Instagram. Facebook, 68% of Americans are on Facebook. 74% of that 68% visit Facebook daily, and 96% of them use Facebook mobile, which means on their phone. 43% of them get news on Facebook, a little scary, but true. And of those users, they spend an average of 35 minutes on Facebook every single day. People under 65, Facebook, we have 62% of men are on Facebook, 74% of women are on Facebook, on Instagram, which is a more photo-friendly platform, basically kind of tailored toward the younger generation, but the older generations are starting moving towards it. 30% of men are on it, 39% of women are on it. So what does all this mean? Every audience that we're looking for to revitalize the town is on these platforms. So I know that we need young millennials to take over the nightlife on Friday and Saturday night, we need younger professionals to attend happy hours, eateries, and places to watch sports games, we need new families to enjoy weekend strolls downtown, exploring the retail spaces, having desserts, so on and so forth, and we need more established families to attend town events, the wine walks, the jazz in the plaza, the music in the park, all these different things. And all these audiences are on these social platforms, and they're spending, you know, up to an hour a day just scrolling through these platforms, looking for stuff to do, seeing what their friends are doing, their families doing, so on and so forth. I wanted to talk quickly about direct mail marketing. I know this is something the town has used a lot in the past. On average, .5%, that's .5% to 2% of direct mail campaigns are opened and read. Of that .5% to 2%, half of them actually take action. So what goes along with this is also the resources that it takes to actually put these campaigns out, whereas Facebook and Instagram, this is a daily occurrence, this is happening, they're seeing it come through their thread, it's very, very important. I had a little bit more here. Travel and experienced social media pages are something that's popping up a lot lately on these platforms, and an interesting stat was 87% of millennials said they use Facebook and Instagram for travel inspiration. They see something, they want to go there, right? 31% of people under 39 vacation to a new destination because it's something that they found on social media. The reality here is that Los Gatos has everything it needs to be that destination town. We don't need to fake it. We have Loma Brewing Company Brewery of the Year from California State, or California State Fair. We have Hoppa's Brewing Company coming here soon, they won Best Brewery in San Jose.
Mr. Thomas, your three minutes are up, but let's see if council has any questions for you. Vice Mayor.
That's me. I was looking at Mariko. Hello. I don't disagree with anything that you're saying.
Okay.
And let's assume that I accept all of that. My question to you is, why is that, why is it a town obligation to fund that versus a business owner and Chamber obligation to fund that?
I think, so I'll give you a little background. I mean, I'm born and raised here, I went to Los Gatos High School. When I was younger, this seemed to be a community where businesses kind of worked together. Recently, it seems to have been a little more competitive because it's become this, this place where businesses aren't necessarily thriving like they once were. And so instead of the businesses coming together and marketing this as a team, it's become more of this single entity hoping to stand out against the crowd. What we're trying to do here is build a community center where people can come and get every piece of information about what it is to do here. You know, restaurants, wineries, lodging, all these different things, even the parks in town, like there needs to be a centralized location where they can come and find all this information. That's what we're proposing here. And it's going to be on a daily occurrence like Catherine mentioned before. This is not going to be something that someone sees once a week, once a month, it's going to be five to seven days a week where we're going to be promoting different events, different businesses, again, like more of this community feel rather than each business kind of handling it on their own.
Councilmember Seok.
So the question, again, towards operations, so is the idea that someone from your company would be on the social media pushing the information out and responding to the various comments that are put there? Or is that something that you would train to, to someone to then take on?
No, so the proposal we gave Catherine through the Chamber of Commerce is a full execution from start to finish for one year. So we have a team, we have account managers who handle the account, all the messaging and that sort of thing, and then we actually have community members who reach out to those who are in neighboring communities, things like that, who we think would be in that target audience that we want to come here and enjoy Los Gatos as a destination town.
And then how do, how would you, as the consultant, then evaluate your success? How do you tie the, the social media campaigns that you do with success? What are the metrics that you, you use to evaluate?
So we'll provide reports on a monthly basis that basically show all these different impressions, followings, engagements, that sort of thing. But I'm also a member of the Los Gatos Food and Wine Group, and so we will, I'm going to be attending those events and talking about each promotion that they have coming up so we can help promote them. And, you know, we'll obviously hear feedback from them as well. So not only will it be the reports of the statistics on who's coming, where these audiences coming from, I'm not sure how, where you guys are of how trackable social media it is, but it's very, very powerful. And so all these things will be relatively easy to judge whether things are working or not.
That looks like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got a second request from Tyler Taylor to speak. However, we only have three minutes per speaker. If there's another member of your organization here who can come up and speak, that would be fine, but we can't give you another opportunity. So no other cards, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, and we'll move to council for discussion. Mr. Rennie.
I'd like to start with the request staff's help. This is my fifth year of doing budgets, and it feels different this year for some reason. Usually, we look at, you know, recommendations from the Arts Commission, recommendations from the Community Services Commission, and we, you know, maybe we can add a few thousand dollars to their budget and so forth. So we have this budget set between the two, which is about almost $130,000, it looks like, a little bit less than that. What is odd to me is all of these other requests that have come in outside of that that haven't gone through, you know, so you, you spend time with the Arts Commission, you say, okay, these, you know, you'll get a bunch of applications, and then you'll talk to them about what's appropriate, what fits in, what doesn't fit in. And we've got a bunch of requests that have gone around that whole process that I don't normally see, so I'm not sure which of these is really appropriate and which is not. And so that's, that's sort of part of the question, can you help out there? The second, you know, and usually in our process, so we look at those grants, and then we look at what are our priorities, and then allocate money towards our priorities. So we've been saying that, you know, our downtown vitality is a priority, so maybe the Chamber is a different kind of request than what fits into the art and so forth. But my, my second part of the question is, I, it feels like somebody said, the town has a whole bunch of surplus funds, let's go try to get some. And, you know, because of all these requests and sort of some of the comments that have come in, and I didn't think we had, normally our, and, you know, Mr. Conway can maybe speak to it a little bit, normally we have end-of-the-year savings, might call it surplus, but that's what goes in to fund our capital project. If we spent all this surplus, we wouldn't have any money for our capital projects next year, for facilities, for streets, so forth. So do we have a super amount of access that everybody's trying to get? So maybe there's a few questions in there, but help me get started in the process of trying to decide what to do with these requests that are sort of out of the normal process.
Okay, thank you, council member. It's a great question. So we did have a lot of interest in our community grant program this year, as we have in years past, and both of our commissions worked really hard to bring you a package of recommendations that are contained in the budget book for your consideration. You've heard from some of the service providers tonight who are interested in either getting more money or supporting the recommendation as is. So there is definitely more need than what historically we've put aside for community grants. Second of all, we had these one-time pilot monies such as Ride, where they did not apply for a grant, but yet there was still an expectation that the town would continue to support the pilot. So we were put in a little bit of an awkward position of, well, why aren't you just putting this into your budget? And so for that reason, as your manager, I'm recommending a $10,000 continued-to-support Ride, but not at the level, just given the outcomes that we've seen so far. And for next year, we would recommend that the Ride program go through the community grant process, so that way it is on equal footing with all of our other great nonprofits and service providers, so that way there's not multiple ways for interest groups to, to come forward. It's very clear in the budget that there is some discretionary funds, if you will. We heard very loud and clear from the council that they, you had, we had been scrutinizing together our internal service funds, and so we did, we are recommending closing two of them, and reallocating some of the money to other priorities, such as equipment replacement and workers' comp. But even with that, we still have some additional money. And so, of course, as stakeholders come forward, we want to make sure that there's an orderly process for their consideration. And so tonight is really the night for you to consider those other requests. In the future, the mayor and I have discussed a separate council agenda item perhaps in August where we can rethink our community grant program, and maybe it's time to rethink the categories, the criteria, et cetera, and really set it up so that everyone who hasn't asked knows that this is the process to go through as opposed to coming to the podium during strategic priorities or during budget. So I think we're, we're learning very much from this spring, and I think we would like to bring to you in, in August, a retooled process. So you've got a lot of requests, folks are interested in partnering with us in one form or another. I think as, as your manager, I just want a gentle reminder that we are a community, and our role as local government is to provide basic services. It's very generous of the town that we even have a community grant program that's funded directly from our general fund. We're not passing through federal dollars or other things that other communities do. These are our hard-earned tax dollars from our residents. So it is, it's a tough decision, I know, but it is different this year because we have so many more requests than we have in the past.
Councilmember Seok.
Okay, if, so I understand we have so much to discuss today, but since we're on the subject of the community arts and human services, if you or if the appropriate staff person could just walk through, let's start with the community arts and education grants. And so in the past, we've, we've consistently allocated $20,000, and so we did receive, I'm looking at the staff report, more in requests. If you could just explain to me, it looks like there are some requests that are duplicative that are both in the arts as well in the human services, and so was, it's two separate commissions, so was there one application submitted to both? I'm just trying to get a better sense of how this process unfolded so that we can ensure, as in August, when we do look at this reevaluation, that it's done fairly.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ryan Baker, our library director, to explain how it unfolded this year.
Ryan Baker, library director. So this year, we changed the grant process a little bit in terms of the applications and the way that those were submitted. In the past, it had been a very, very cumbersome process for applicants. What we had heard from that process was that it was so cumbersome that it did not make sense for a lot of them to spend the time actually doing that for the, the amount of return on that one. So in this last year, when we, we did simplify the process, we simplified it to the point, I think, where a lot of the different groups could very easily submit those. And so what we found that we didn't expect was that quite a few of the organizations submitted different proposals in both of the categories. So these would have been different proposals, even though they looked very, very similar, they were not submitted, it wasn't one proposal, they went to both. They were separate applications under separate cover. So in total, we had 21 applications that were given to, or submitted to both the Arts and Community Services Commission. Those came from 15 different organizations. So there were quite a few organizations that submitted to both, both categories.
Okay. Okay, so then, if you could bear with me, I just want to make sure I better, I understand. So if I'm looking at the arts, specifically, let's, so Community Concert Association, 500 from Community Human- five hundred from community, human services, and it looks like four thousand from the arts. So, that five hundred from human services is for a very specific five hundred dollar request.
So, there, in the way that those applications came through, there, there was not a conversation between the Arts Commission and the Community Services Commission. So, those applications went straight to those departments, or stretched to those commissions. So, in terms of the way that everything was worded in those applications, there, they did, the organizations that submitted them did have some differences. They weren't exact duplicates. However, when we look at the, the overall number, I mean, the overall projects that they have there, they do look similar on paper. What we would like to do is, when we come back with the entire grant process and how that unfolds for the future, is to make sure that, that organizations really have just a, a single application, and that it funnels through the correct and most appropriate avenue for, for their funding. So, so there may be a little bit of overlap in, in what you're seeing, although those, those overlaps were not considered in a conversation between the two commissions. Those were considered independently.
Okay.
And I would just add, from the Community and Senior Service Commission perspective, in addition to the fact that it seems many of our organizations just have increased need, we're also noticing that a lot of our partners are just getting increasing sophistication in their understanding of town processes. And so, part of it, I think, is their better understanding of how they might be able to utilize the town process. And then, the other part is, there is increased need. You know, some of the duplicative nature is because they know the Arts Council traditionally only has about a twenty thousand dollar bucket, and the community and senior service bucket is closer to a hundred, so some of it was, they're going after where they perceive there might be a greater opportunity to get more, more grant funds.
And, and then a follow-up, if I may. So, when the commission evaluates the applications and then makes the requests, and makes the recommended amount, so I'm going to pick on a couple of what we have here. So, Parents Helping Parents, it appears there was a six thousand request. It was recommended that they get three thousand. Is there, in that application, does it show what would get funded with that three thousand? What wouldn't? There's a discussion on that? Or is that an amount that the commission recommends, and then the applicant then's responsible for deciding how to reshift that funding?
So, the, the applicants, when they submit their application, they put a grant amount that they're requesting. What happened this year at Community and Senior Services, because we had requests of about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand for a program that traditionally funds somewhere in the, in the range of about a hundred thousand. Each applicant, similar to here, was provided three minutes to provide an overview of their program and why they're requesting the funds, and then all of the commissioners were then able to do Q and A of them. What the commissioners on the CSSC ended up gravitating towards was, what type of numbers are you able to, you know, give care for in the community? What type of care are you providing? You know, are you providing just management services? Are you providing actual meals? You know, what is it you're actually providing? They tended this year in conversations to gravitate more towards a lot of the folks who they have a greater familiarity with, who they've traditionally funded. Some new applicants, they did want to provide some seed funding, and so, at the CSSC level, that's why you'll see things like a thousand dollars or five hundred, because it's an organization that they want to get greater exposure to for the future, but they didn't know enough about the organization to commit larger dollar amounts. And then, the one applicant that they decided not to provide ending funding for, they just thought that program was kind of outside of the traditional purview of their grant program, that it probably set, fit better as an education program within arts and education.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
It's kind of, kind of a follow-up, and I'm not sure who directed to. The organizations that have come in tonight with brand-new requests, New Move, Chamber Commerce, Mid Penn, would, if they had come through with what they want, that would, it would be basically contract funding for social media, building out of their downstairs, and from all I can figure out, is some kind of maintenance or construction at stables, would they have qualified for this grant funding? I'm looking at arts and education, arts or educational programs, community services seems to be support services, human needs, et cetera. Would they have qualified with their requests under this grant program?
I'll just speak for CSSC, based on how I've observed them the last several grant cycles. I would say probably none of these would fit kind of within the way they view their program, which is potentially why maybe we're seeing these requests outside of the program, because perhaps the applicants also surmised as much.
And I can speak for the, the Arts and Culture Commission. So, specifically, in the application, it was stated that grant funds could not be used for the construction or maintenance of any particular, any particular physical thing. So, that would have excluded any kind of building or maintenance. When we bring the grant idea back to you in August, that could be something that you could consider if you wanted to have those types of things come through a grant process.
Any follow-up? And I'm, I'm assuming that a contract for a social media campaign doesn't fall into a arts and education program or a services program either?
So, in the way that we had, we had worded the grants and within the purview of, I would believe, of both the Community Services and the Arts Commission, they, they probably would not have felt that that would have been within the purview of, of any of those, those.
Okay. Thank you.
No further questions. Councilmember Seok.
Actually, just a procedural question, Mr. Mayor, how you'd like to proceed. There's several decisions we have to make in front of us, and so, would you prefer just individual motions as we proceed? Would you, or do you prefer one large one at the end?
I'm so glad you asked that question. And the answer is, we will do individual motions, and I was thinking about just looking at the categories here. We have the arts and education grants, we have the community human services grants, of course, we have the decision to make on the downtown beautification, we have the new requests that have come in this evening that we can discuss. We also have the budget as presented by staff, as well as the CIP budget presented by staff, to probably, each one of these I would look at as being a discussion among ourselves and then a vote. So, I think we should just kind of go down the line in that manner. Oh, last but not least, most important is, there's two point nine million dollars that we have to decide what to do with.
Okay.
Councilmember Spector.
Well, I'm not going to go down through your line yet, but thank you. I have a couple of questions for staff that will probably overlap all of the items that you just mentioned. With regard to fiscal year eighteen nineteen, is, is there, is staff saying that for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, staff anticipates that our revenues will exceed our expenses?
The current estimates for, were delivered at mid-year for our forecast, did, did indicate that would there be a revenue above expenditures surplus for this fiscal year. We won't know until June thirtieth, when we have, you know, the end of the fiscal year, so these were just estimates that were given.
So, we won't be able to budget that tonight?
We will not. This is, the two point nine is from the prior year's surplus. So, this is, the surplus that we anticipate for this fiscal year will be finalized as we go through our final year-end audit for eighteen nineteen.
So, two million nine hundred thousand is from seventeen eighteen?
Yes.
And we don't know eighteen nineteen, or we don't anticipate nineteen twenty?
We have, we have an anticipated, which we mentioned, about a hundred thousand dollar surplus for nineteen twenty. That's just based on the projected revenues, budgeted, proposed budgeted revenues and proposed budgeted expenditures for next year. We're finalizing our actual revenues for this fiscal year through June thirtieth, and we will, I'll be reporting out in the fall of, of what we think. We're, staff does expect a surplus, but we don't know the exact amount yet, but we'll be able to better estimate that, of course, the closer we get to the end of the year.
Okay. Of the two point nine million, is that, that whole amount before the council to, to budget? Or has staff already budgeted some of that into the nineteen twenty expenditures?
Those monies have not been allocated or programmed in any fashion.
So, they haven't, for example, been programmed to a CIP budget or anything like that?
Not at this time.
Okay. And the two point nine million consists of monies from, well, rather than me guessing, consists of monies from?
The prior fiscal year's surplus.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor.
Just want to follow up on that. I'm sorry, because I'm a little confused. I'm looking at the, at the title sheet, if you will, for our staff report, and it says, number two, consider town priorities for the allocation of an estimated one point nine million from the surplus property reserve. And number three is one million from the proposed closing the vehicle maintenance and stores internal service funds. So, is, that doesn't sound to me like surplus from before, but it adds up to two point nine million. So...
Yes, that's right.
Which one is it?
You're absolutely correct. I'm sorry. There is a surplus from last year, but council and their strategic parties has previously allocated those, and, so, the, the additional two point nine is from the one point nine of the sale and the one million dollar close of the, thank you for correcting me on that.
So, there's not some other two point nine million out there?
There was a surplus for last year that has, that council, the strategic priorities in February allocated. So, that's what confused me, but yeah, you're correct.
The funds that we're considering, what, what we want to do with, if we want to do something with them, are one point nine million from the surplus property reserve and one point mil, one million from the vehicle maintenance and stores internal service funds, correct?
That's correct. And then, there was an additional surplus, but we have identified that was allocated as part of the council's strategic priorities.
Only, only asking you about what money we get to do something with tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you. All right. Well, since we have these double two point nine, the excess two point nine from the, that you're talking about, that we talked about some meetings ago, what was the source of that money? And what are you saying the council has already made decisions about?
Okay. Trying to go to the right page here. Last year, and get to, can you, where's my, get the, do you have that?
Hello. Gita Ungvari, Finance and Budget Manager.
Budget Manager, can you help me with this?
And I just, just want to focus back on the two point nine million that's available for allocation, which wasn't allocated, which comes from, as council member mentioned, from the surplus property and closing the two funds. And all the previous year's surplus was already incorporated in the capital special project reserves and allocated in, in the capital program or other areas. So, we are focusing on the two point nine and why the finance director mentioned another two point eight, two point nine that we estimate as a surplus this fiscal year, which won't be determined exactly until we close the fiscal year.
So, the, the two point nine that Ms. Jensen was talking about, that's easy to identify. She verbalized that it's in our staff report. But we have another about two point nine that is determined by the excess of our revenue over our expenditures. And what is still not clear to me is, are you saying that we have to wait till later in the year to determine what that is and then allocate it, or that we have allocated it before it existed?
By, by our policy, the surplus that determines by closing the fiscal year in December, when we present the CAFR, will go into special capital and special project reserves, and after that reserve there, the council can allocate the money, any of the council meeting by the resolution, or waiting for the budget process.
All right. You'll have to bear with me here. You're talking about December of two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, it's correct.
And at that time, we would be allocating excesses for fiscal year eighteen nineteen?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And we haven't given any direction on that?
No.
But I'm going to assume, and I guess you should never assume, I'm going to assume that any excess we had from fiscal year seventeen eighteen was allocated by the December of two thousand and eighteen?
Any excess fund went into the capital special project reserve, based on the reserve policy. Some of them went into the OPEP pension reserve, three hundred thousand dollars, and the rest of them in the capital special project reserves. And all the allocation from that reserve happened based on the, the council direction for the eighteen nineteen budget.
Eighteen nineteen or seventeen eighteen?
Eighteen nineteen, because, so, the capital special project reserve is a, a reserve that holds all the surpluses from every fiscal year, and the council, with either the budget or other separate action, can allocate funding from those reserves.
If, if I may, the overhead projector's not working, but on page A fifty-four, it shows the chronology of events, because it does get confusing. Round December is when the annual CAFR closure happens and gets presented to council. This past December, when that happened, that's when three point seven million in surplus funds was identified. That was brought to the council then during strategic priorities in the February timeframe. Staff was provided direction that included additional payments to pension, a million dollars towards downtown revitalization, additional monies towards PCI. And then, as we now are moving through the budget process, if you look at the middle column on page A fifty-four, we're now building another budget, but we also have a year that's about to close. And so, the staff memo identified that as it looks like we're heading towards the close of the current year, we may have a surplus again of, I believe we said roughly, two point eight million dollars. And so, I apologize for the confusion. We had three point seven million from a surplus from the prior year that we've already been given direction on, and has been programmed in the current budget. We currently have two point nine million in extra funds from the sale of a property, and then also from some guidance we received during the discussion of internal service funds, where staff decided it was appropriate to close two funds, freeing up an additional million dollars. But then, staff thought it appropriate, as we're having these discussions, to also give you a little bit of a forward look that says, as we move into December again and the CAFR closes, you will probably be having a discussion again, more than likely, about a surplus from the closure of this year.
And it's just so confusing, because the numbers are about the same.
They are about the same.
Like, exactly the same.
Yeah. The budget process is, is a difficult one.
All right. Thank you.
I have three hands up. I think it's Rob first. Mr. Rennie, I'm sorry. Ms. Jensen, and then...
So, I would, just wanted to, you know, if I actually read the staff report on page four, it says the reallocation of the three point seven you just mentioned, of the eighteen nineteen budget surplus. So, is that correct? It's the eighteen nineteen budget surplus, the three point seven?
I will turn to, to get on that.
So, the three point seven was part of the surplus in fiscal year seventeen eighteen?
So, that's not, it's not written correctly then in the staff report here, right? Page, I think it's page four, it says the reallocation of the three point seven million of the twenty eighteen nineteen budget surplus. So, that's not correct. It should read twenty seventeen eighteen.
It should, it should read seventeen eighteen.
Okay. That, I had, I have blue lines all over that, because you've mentioned two numbers, both saying budget surplus eighteen nineteen. So, now, if I correct that, I understand the page. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I'm going to beat a dead horse here. Thank you for your explanation. We had three point seven million extra last year. I'm not even going to try the fiscal years. And we said, well, million dollars for downtown, PCI, et cetera. This year, we know that we have one point nine from a sale of property and one point, and one million from closing a surplus fund, correct?
Correct.
We know we have that money. We get to do something with it tonight.
We do. We actually know that the one point nine closed Escrow today. I believe the town attorney can speak to that, and the money actually hit the town's account. And the one million, as I said, was part of some of the multiple conversations we had the past year about financial practices, and staff thought it was appropriate to recommend closing those two funds.
So, bear with me here. The three point seven million is spent. The one, the two point nine is for us to spend tonight, and anything else, we wait until the close of today's, the fiscal year this time, and figure out whether we want to spend it later. We have two point nine to play with tonight, correct?
That is correct. Staff thought it was appropriate, based on the direction we got at strategic priorities, to program the three point seven. Staff did not feel we had sufficient direction to program the two point nine. We are seeking direction tonight on how you would like to allocate the two point nine in the budget, and then those resolutions will be brought to you in June, showing your direction. And then, those resolutions will be brought to you in June, showing your direction from this evening.
Councilmember Saak?
Okay. I'm going to do a couple of things. One, I'm going, I'm going to start with the transmittal letter, actually, versus the staff report, which is from our operating capital summary budget. And so, I have the same questions. And so, I'm going to start off and share the conversations and that I've had with staff. And thank you, staff, for walking me through it this past week. So, my following up on a, on a question councilmember Specter had about the five-year forecast. One of the key things that I think I've come to fully understand is the, the confusion between the different allocations we have during the different sets of the year. And so, the surplus that we discussed in December, I think we've had numerous conversations about. The surpluses are the, the savings that we have when staff does not meet, the cost savings from salaries, basically. And so, I think what we need to, to decide is, one, the policy direction of, do we want to continue allocating and budgeting at a high level and then have that cost savings every December to look at? Or is it something that we'd rather fine tune so that we don't have such a large surplus at the end of the year? So, that's one of the things that I'd like to pose. And I know we've already allocated that three point seven, but one confusion that I still have, and I'm hoping staff could explain to me, so that that money that we, we have goes into our capital improvement reserves.
Per the, per the reserve policy, yes.
Per, per, and so, that then goes into that pot of money. And so, where, and then this is the time of year when we actually decide where that money goes and to which project.
Correct.
And so, we have the five-year plan in front of us. And one of the things that I also recently came to fully understand, if I'm looking at A eight of our capital improvement plan, these are all the projects that are in some phase of development that we've looked at in the past five years. And I'm going to look at Director Conway.
Yes.
So, do we need to then, today, we do not allocate any further funds into the capital improvement, because that three point seven reserve already took care of it? Or are we also putting more money into this?
There is new money from, from the capital projects reserve that's recommended for nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
Additional money.
Okay. So, then now I want to get into something very specific, because I'm still trying to understand this. So, one of the key priorities that we talked about was that we wanted our PCI to get to seventy. And so, if I'm looking at the transmittal letter, A six, it says that with new, with new county and state transportation funds, investment in street maintenance of two point nine will allow the town's PCI to increase to seventy-two. So, is that an, but if I'm looking at page A eight now, the street repair and resurfacing is actually five point nine instead of two point nine. And so, this additional three million dollars, does that push our PCI up higher? Or, or am I just misreading the total amount that's before me?
So, thank you, Lisa Peterson, Assistant Parks and Public Works Director, Town Engineer. So, currently, we need and we have allocated two point nine million dollars in our current budget. And that would get us, at the end of this year, to a seventy, to a seventy-one. Additionally, we would remain at that probably over the next five-year period of time. So, any additional funding that the council would like to put towards our pavement, we could, that would definitely help us to increase our, our pavement condition index. And previously, in one fifteen, eighteen council report that was given to the town council, or nineteen, excuse me, we had stated that in order to increase to a seventy-three, we would need an extra six hundred thousand dollars a year. To a seventy-five, we would need extra one point two million dollars a year. And to get to a seventy-nine, we would need an extra three point one million dollars a year. So, again, any additional funding that we would get towards our pavement condition index would help increase that. And I'm, I'm hoping that that's answered your question.
It does. And let me see if I can simplify my question. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is I'm trying to determine if there's actually more funds available to the council. So, I'm looking at page A eight. And so, it's the very first one, street repair and resurfacing. The total amount is five point nine, six, nine. And, but yet, on page six, it, it says that if we put two point nine, we will get to a PCI of seventy-two. So, the question that I have is, if my priority is to get us to a seventy-two, why am I putting three more million in this, in this line item?
So, let me start to enter. So, when you are referring page A eight, this includes every carry-forward project and new funding. So, all the carry-forward items that already was allocated and we carry forward this for the following fiscal years. So, when the Parks and Public Works Department determines their PCI numbers, they're already assuming the existing funding available that was previously allocated by the council.
Okay. So, let me see, let me see if I understood this. So, then this two point nine, that, to bring us to PCI seventy-two, is in addition to what has already been carried forward?
So, let me take a, take a crack at it and step us backwards a little bit.
Okay.
And, and street resurfacing is a little bit difficult, because it's a project that we put money into on an annual basis. And so, a lot of times, what you see in the budgeting process is the money that we're, for instance, we're doing our street program right, right now, as we speak. We're paving streets. So, you see, you see some of those dollars in the budget, as well as the new dollars we're adding. And they start to compile. So, when, you really have to look at the dollars that we're adding on a particular year versus the summary tables, which start to, to merge them together and don't tell you exactly what we're spending on it or adding on a year-to-year basis. What we've, what we've programmed now, from a total funding perspective, to try and get to your direct, directly to your question, what we've, what we have in the recommended budget will get us to that seventy-one, seventy-two at the end of this fiscal year, as, as we're recommending it now in the, in the program. And that's best seen on page C eight, which is the streets, the, the actual project for that program. And so, that tells you a detailed breakdown, including sources, so you can see what's GFAR and what's other dollars, because the other dollars are restricted and not necessarily dollars that can move out of that. Anything that's a GFAR dollar, the council has the discretion at any time to move, to move about.
Okay. And then, one last question on this. That two point nine, does that include the gas tax that's allocated? Or is that, I guess, another way to say it, two point nine that comes from our general fund? Or is that two point nine total that includes the gas tax? And so, it's one point seven from our general fund?
Yes. I think I'd point you back to that, to that chart on page C eight. And, and there's a twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty new funding column. And that, that identifies each of the funding allocations across the funds, including the gas tax and the GFAR dollars that are in there. And there's some that are in GFAR that, so, the, the VLF and the, the twenty sixteen measure B, I think, are captured in the, in the GFAR element. Yeah.
Okay.
So, those are the exact, the exact breakdowns by fund for that particular project.
Okay. And so, to summarize, if I could, so that I understand, what you are requesting brings us to a PCI of seventy-one, seventy-two next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Saak. You reminded me of something else, so thank you. And it has to do with the capital improvement budget. And it sort of combines with what I was talking about before. The, I'm going to make a statement, and then you can tell me, yes, you're right, no, you're wrong, whatever. We have a carry-forward budget for the capital improvement program of sixteen million. And I understood that for nineteen, twenty, we were adding another twelve million for a total of twenty-eight million. That, to me, indicated that we were allocating funds from the nineteen, twenty budget. So, if somebody could explain that to me, because now I understand we're not doing that, because the nineteen, twenty, twelve million would not be available yet, because we haven't figured it out.
So, we've got a bunch of years floating around out there. So, we, we're programming into this current budget, in the document that you have now, dollars that were left over from seventeen, eighteen, from the last fiscal year, way back. The, the funds that were, that we identified, that, and we identified those with you in December. So, it takes us a full six months after the close of a year to get that number reconciled and to have that discussion with you. So, we did that in the middle of eighteen, nineteen. So, seventeen, eighteen decisions are made in the middle of eighteen, nineteen. We take your guidance as Assistant Town Manager Andrew said, we take your guidance at that point and program the budget. So, that's the point of the strategic, strategic goals and that setting, goal setting, excuse me, process, is, is to take your guidance and program those dollars into the budget. So, we've, we've done that. So, those dollars left from seventeen, eighteen go in here, in, into this current budget. At the end of this current fiscal year, the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, we'll have additional dollars that are surplus. We won't know about those, though, until December of this year. And that's when we'll have that discussion with you. So, everything lags by a full year, which gets a little bit confusing and, and takes us, as that, that chart on the, on the screen shows, takes us a while to work through to get those dollars programmed. And then, we confused it even more in this year, because we have that extra two point nine million dollars from the stores' funds and from surplus, surplus property sales, the sale of the Winchester property, that just adds more dollars into the conversation. So, that gives you additional things to think about. So, I, I would say, take, take it, take it in this stage. The, the dollars, the dollars from seventeen, eighteen that, that you have to program into the, into the budget are programmed into the manager's budget right now. You have a decision tonight to make on the two point nine million that are additional surplus dollars, and that, that's the focus. Or alternatively, you could rearrange the budget that the, that the managers presented to you and pull some dollars and shuffle them around. And that's a prerogative of yours as well.
All right, thank you. And, and I do get that. But if you take a look at your capital improvement budget, page A five, and it starts out with the sixteen million. And then, in the grayed area, it adds, it adds twelve million, and you end up with twenty-eight million. But at the top, it says nineteen, twenty. And that's where I'm getting confused, the reference to nineteen, twenty. So, are we or are we not allocating, at this point, nineteen, twenty monies? Or am I misreading this chart?
The nineteen, twenty on that is referencing the budgets, the budget year of nineteen, twenty. So, you're putting those dollars into next year's budget for, for program expenditure. So, beginning July first, which begins the nineteen, twenty budget cycle, that's when we'll be spending those dollars. These are not leftovers from the, from the nineteen, twenty year. We don't know what that is yet.
And you don't know what eighteen, nineteen is?
We don't know that either.
No.
So, none of these numbers come from eighteen, nineteen, or nineteen, twenty?
They were put in the capital reserve, and they're now being budgeted. We don't spend them and appropriate them. They, they sit in the reserve. And I think that was, I, I apologize for my mistake earlier. But when I look at seventeen, eighteen surplus, we have recommendations that we, council had given us from all those excess monies that were surplus in seventeen, eighteen. In addition, what threw me is, I, I think of it globally as a, as a big, one large sum, because that really hasn't been legally or adopted or budgeted yet. The two point nine is from one-time monies that we anticipate receiving this year in terms of the one point nine million dollar property sale, the one million dollar reallocation of closing the two internal service funds. But there was also a surplus for seventeen, eighteen, which council has already given, or staff has included in the budget message about some suggested reallocations of that. In addition to those recommendations, there was money that ended up in the special capital and special projects reserve that's being, that was being programmed in nineteen, in, excuse me, in nineteen, twenty, so that it can be spent and appropriated in these capital project-type projects.
But those funds didn't come from eighteen, nineteen?
No, they did not.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, before we go any further, I'm going to suggest a five-minute recess, and we will reconvene at about, I don't know, nine oh eight, or something like that. So we will reconvene our meeting, and the Vice Mayor has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to do the PCI question in a different way. And Mr. Morley, I don't know if you're the one to answer this, or whoever it is. But going again from the 30,000, I don't care what was allocated when, I'm looking at page seven of 11 of our staff report, which is discussing what direction staff can give on the use of the additional one-time monies, which we've now identified as 2.9 million. And the second bullet says, "Street repairs to improve the town's pavement condition index." As with Councilwoman Seaw, if my priority is to get to a PCI level that allows me to spend Measure B funds in a discretionary manner, how much do I need to get there the fastest?
So in the upcoming year, with your current funding allocated in the budget as proposed, you will get to a 71, 72. The Measure B threshold is a 70, so you will be there. The key after that will be sustaining that 71 or 72.
So how would it help me, I've got two follow-ups. How would it help me to allocate an additional, additional funds to that if my current allocation is getting to that Measure B threshold?
So the question really is about, where do you want your, what is your PCI and where do you want it to be, long-term, understanding that there's a deferred maintenance element of about $10 million? And do you want to start to address that, or do you have other priorities? And that's completely your decision.
Okay. And my final question is, if the town, in fact, gets to the threshold PCI of 70, when might it apply for and be able to use Measure B funds in a discretionary manner?
So there is no application. It's the formulaic dollars that come to us on an annual basis, and the use of those dollars becomes less restrictive in that we can use them for broader uses after we achieve that 70. And at that point, we would be taking, if we use them for, other than pavement maintenance, we would be taking away from our pavement maintenance allocation and would soon fall below a 70.
Okay. So assuming that I want to get to a PCI of 70 as soon as possible, so that I can use funds to both maintain and use them for, maintain streets, and use those funds for, say, a school bus program, or an alternative transportation measure, or a TDM. If I keep the current budget, when exactly am I going to get to 70, and when exactly am I going to see Measure B funds that I can then spend in a discretionary fashion? Whether that be for maintenance, or for, let's say, a transportation demand management program?
So we anticipate that in next fiscal year, you will be, with your current budget, you will be at the 71 or 72 mark. So you will be there at your current funding levels. So I don't think you need to do anything different to reach that.
So at next year's budget, theoretically, I would have Measure B funds that I could spend for something other than maintenance?
Yes. My caution is that if you use the pavement maintenance dollars for something other than maintenance, you will be taking them away from pavement maintenance, and then you'll be falling below a 70 fairly soon.
Unless I give you more of the discretionary 2.9 million.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so seeing that there are no more questions at this time, have to figure out what is the best approach. So one approach here, that I just thought of, is we can start with the $2.9 million and decide how we're going to allocate that, because we had some requests this evening for, from many organizations, for potential money, and if council wants to participate in that, I assume it would be coming from that 2.9 potentially. So, or, we can adopt the other recommendations by the arts and education grants, and the ones made by the Community and Human Services Commission, and then address the other requests, and then address the 2.9. So Mr. Rennie has a question before we move forward with...
Actually, I wanted to just make a motion. I want to do it in small pieces.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'd like to make the motion, we'll see if council's interested, to return the ride funding to the 17,000. That's my motion.
So we have one simple motion. Do we have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, I'll make another motion if you're interested.
Go ahead.
I make the motion that we accept the Arts Commission and the Senior and Community Services and Senior Commission recommendations as in the staff report.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Seaw.
I have a quick question, and this is to Mr. Baker. My understanding is that the criteria for both of these and the processes are being looked at, and a recommendation for how criteria and the process can be improved will come back in August. So the question that I had asked him over the break was, given the, given the speakers and given the needs, is there an ability to add a little bit more to the community services? And how does that go back to the commission to determine whether there's merit? You know, we heard from Parents Helping Parents, we've heard from Nextdoor Solutions. I don't have a sense of whether that additional 3,000 is worthy of granting, and I'd like to know, through Mr. Baker, when you look at this in August, is there an ability, if I made a motion and it was successful, to add a little bit more to these requests? Could it come back? Or is it, it has to be decided today?
So for this particular grant cycle, if you wanted to add additional funds to any applicant that brought forward, any kind of ideas, that would be part of this process right here. What we're looking at in August is not these particular grants that have come forward. We'll be looking at the process by which those, the whole system works. So we're going to break it apart and then put together some ideas of how we can pool the money, what those funding amounts should be, but that will all be moving forward. We'd like to close out this particular cycle with tonight's meeting, so that it could be finalized within the budget.
And if I may, a second question pertaining to this. It's, I know in the past that the police department has had a grant to help with domestic violence, and I noticed that we don't have funds for that anymore. So the question I have for the chief and his staff is that, is there an ability within your current resources to continue that work? Or is there, is there a recommendation to give more to Nextdoor so they can absorb some of the work that you have not been able to do with that, lack of that grant?
Good evening. Pete DeSena, Chief of Police, thank you for the question. I do have experience with Nextdoor. They are a very worthwhile organization. We do have a victim support unit that we're trying to restructure, but is it more of a general victim assistance? I think there would be some value, although we do utilize, I think Nextdoor does have advocates that are on call for use in situations. I believe we have used those. So with that, I don't know if Captain D'Antonio has anything to add?
Captain Mike D'Antonio, Support Services Bureau Captain. So I'm not sure why Nextdoor Solutions is not in there, if they just didn't apply for the grant process this year. We still continue to use Nextdoor Solutions, so any and every victim of domestic violence, we call Nextdoor Solutions and ask them to respond as a victim advocate. They have not denied that, and so I'm not aware that any change in services would occur. And I'm sorry, I don't know why that they didn't apply this year.
If I could just clarify, so they did apply, the recommended amount was less than what they requested? And so I guess to simplify, my question is, do you think that would be, would that hurt your ongoing relationship?
And my understanding, if I heard the representative correctly, a lot of that, they want to apply that towards prevention, they want to get, which I think is a great idea. I don't think it's going to impact us. I think anything we do, unfortunately, even in a wonderful community like Los Gatos, we do have domestic violence issues. So I think any money spent, that would probably be worthwhile.
Thank you.
So I have a question for the maker of the motion. Would you consider adding 1,000 to Art Docents, 2,000 to Parents Helping Parents, and 7,000 to New Millennium, based on the public testimony we've heard this evening?
That's an acceptable amendment to me, and we can ask the secondor.
Sadly, no.
So that means...
Doesn't work.
That means I don't have a motion anymore?
No, you still have your motion.
We still have a motion, we don't have the amendment. Okay, got it.
Okay, so we have...
May I make a friendly amendment? Would the maker and the secondor be willing to add the 3,000 to Parent Helping Parents, the full amount requested by Nextdoor?
Which is another 3,000?
An additional 5,000 to the community services, but I'm going to double-check with the town manager. 3,000 and 2,000?
5,000, and the commission recommended 3,000.
And the last year, they also received 3,000.
So you'd like to add 2,000 to Nextdoor and 3,000 to...
Parents Helping Parents.
That's acceptable to me. Is it acceptable of the secondor?
Yes.
All right, so we have an amended motion and a second. That's also been amended. We'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That passes unanimously. So moving on to the next part of our program, we have the remainder of 2.9 million minus $5,000 to decide what to do with this evening. So, my thoughts, and I'll just start because they're mine. I thought we could consider putting 1.9 million into the Los Gatos downtown street improvement bucket that we adopted in, was it January or February during our strategic goals? And then we would have $1 million left that we could put towards our PCI, however we would phrase that, I guess would be our, just our streets program. And that would cover the 2.9 million. And then, at the end of the year, there is another anticipated potential that we would be programming at that time. And if there were, was an opportunity to contribute some more money towards the streets at that time to bring up the PCI, great, but in the meantime, that's where I would consider allocating the funds. Although, one last item I would like to see is the downtown beautification, and I would like to ask the town manager, we talked about hiring, we talked about costs of the planter boxes and power washing, and we also talked about hiring a part-time employee. So what would be the better way to handle those items, so they are taken care of on an annual basis, on a regular basis, on an ongoing basis?
Thank you for the question, and I'll start, and Mr. Morley may wish to add a few things. So we did... a few things. So, we did look at the costs for vendors to provide the additional cleanliness as well as the planter boxes. And so, the numbers in your staff report reflect vendor-type services. And in addition, we identified a fifty-thousand-dollar cost for a part-time staff member who would work about four hours a day during the weekdays to essentially, you know, clean up the immediate spills and the other issues, maybe tend to some of the plantings. But, as I recall, I believe it was a little bit of a separate piece of work. I think, based on the conversation I had earlier with the mayor today, I think there's a question as to whether it would be more cost-effective for us to use the part-time employee instead of a vendor for the planter boxes and some of the other cleanliness. Would we get more return for that investment?
So, we structured these from a cost perspective to minimize the ongoing staffing costs, to try and be cognizant since it can get pricey making long-term commitments and allowing the council some flexibility over time. So, that's why they're set up as a contract look. We could recast this as sort of an in-house service and cost that for you separately. If you were interested in an ongoing commitment to this, remember, these are one-time dollars you're talking about right now. So, the difference between one-time and ongoing and hiring a staff person for a one-year timeframe is pretty difficult. So, with the idea that it was a one-time thing, we tried to structure it in a way that we could deliver that service. If you were interested in the ongoing, I think it's a little different discussion, and we'd want to recast that for you in a different way.
So, for me, I would like it to be continuous, not just fix it up once and then have to vote later. I would like to have a person in charge of beautification, like a beautification technician, not only for the downtown but throughout the town. So, maybe it can start with the downtown and start as potentially a part-time position, but then move forward into, you know, a greater overall maintenance of the town, all those small projects. So, I guess what I would be looking for this evening is the two-point-nine minus the cost of that individual being on staff, starting at part-time to do that cleanup work that we've discussed, and then put the remaining balance in the downtown street project and the remainder after that into the streets improvement, the CPI. So, what I think we should do is just hear from all the council members, and maybe we could kind of take a poll, how they think the two-point-nine should be utilized, and then we will go with a consensus and see what happens. We'll start with Councilmember Seok, and we'll move from my right to my left.
Okay.
If we're putting you on a spark, we could...
Okay, so, let's start with the beautification items that were listed in the staff report. I am in agreement of using those funds. I would like to ask staff to see what's more cost-effective, whether or not we hire, we consult, or we have a vendor. I leave those details to you, but specifically the sidewalk, I think that, if I remember correctly, was something that we all agreed that we would like to look into, and all the other suggested items here, I think are worthy. From what I understand, from our discussion today, the recommended budget already brings us to a PCI of seventy-one, seventy-two, and so, I'm comfortable with leaving it as that. I actually would like to use the surplus that's been identified towards paying down our pension. I know we've had constant conversations about this, and so I think this is an opportunity to utilize those funds, put that in the larger bucket. And then, I'd like the Finance Committee to look at it as scheduled in June, and ultimately, we make a payment to pay down our pension.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll start out by saying that everything that has been brought forward by the community this evening, by staff on our budget, all that potential, there's nothing bad. There's nothing bad about flowers in the community. There's nothing bad about better, you know, taking care of the stables, taking care of the museum. There's nothing wrong with any of those. However, the town does not have unlimited funds. And what we're facing right now is a, an unfunded liability of sixty-three-point-two million as of two thousand seventeen. And when we pay that, as we have been over time in the mandatory payments to CalPERS, we're paying right now a interest rate of seven-and-a-half percent. And the monies that we're paying that with from the town is getting, earning interest at about two percent. And so, even though I think all of the things that are before us are worthwhile, I agree with Ms. Seok. I believe that the monies should go to the two-point-nine, I believe it is, I should know it by now, should go to pay down our unfunded liabilities. I believe additionally that the, some of the suggestions for downtown, all of the suggestions for downtown are good, but the one that I would specifically support is the power washing of the sidewalks.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, I'm going to look at page seven of our staff report that's got the little bullets. I think it makes sense to spend some money for the OPEB reserve, but given that there's going to be a meeting in August, I want, I personally want to know, what's the best use of money rather than throwing it all there? So, for example, if I consider our ongoing street maintenance and PCI to be a continuing obligation and debt, just like I do the pension, and that I can get something back from it by having discretionary dollars, I would like to allocate monies for that, and I'd be willing to start with the six-hundred thousand dollars. And I would like to know from the Finance Committee or the council, when we have our discussion in August, what is the right amount of money to give to OPEB? Because right now, I don't know that, and I don't want to give all the money to them without knowing that. The downtown streetscape, we've already given money to a million dollars. I don't want to put another one-point-nine million to that. The beautification, I think, is fine. I think the power washing is the most cost-effective, although that's, now that Catherine's left, I can't make my speech about how that's a perfect thing for the BID to do, but if you're watching at home. The planter boxes, I have a statement, I guess a question. I had understood from a previous discussion that some of the planter boxes were being maintained by volunteers and some had basically been ceded over to the town for maintenance. Does this suggestion have in mind that the town will take over all of the maintenance of the planter boxes, in which case I have another question and suggestion?
So, this does consider the town taking over maintenance of all of them?
All right, so they would now, they would become a town asset, essentially, because we'd be paying for them.
Or liability, depending on how you look at it.
So, my question that nobody's probably figured out, although I did throw this out last time, is that the planter boxes are an infrastructure, an existing infrastructure that we could take and convert some of them to seating, instead of having all be flowers, have some be a bench, have some be an umbrella, have some be a whatever. How much would something like that cost? Has anyone thought about it?
We haven't looked at that as a costing option, no.
Okay. Because I think we'd probably get more continued use if we did alternating or identified ones that could be used as seating, rather than to put some flowers in on a continuing basis. Because the staff suggestion is, for the part-time person, is only a one-time cost, I don't think that that's a good way to spend our money. I think that we ought to be doing something different with it. So, and I guess in summary, yes, I'd like to power wash the streets. I would like to, I would love to see those planter boxes be used alternatively for seating or an infrastructure that the town already has in place. And I think that there's monies that should be dedicated to the pension, but I don't know what that is yet. And I would like to dedicate the six-hundred thousand dollar per year recommended for street maintenance and upping our PCI.
Councilmember Rennie?
So, I'm going to make sure that we don't have a majority on anything, I think. I don't know how we're going to go from here. So, I think the PCI is good enough, making it over seventy, so I'm not wanting to add another six hundred at this time. It's going to be, I guess what would happen is we'd add six hundred now, and maybe we'd bump it up past seventy-three or something, and then that would allow us to then not put in so much and it'd come back down later, versus having kind of a steady, steady flow of funds. Because I don't know why we need it to be two points higher, except to give us buffer in the future when we don't spend on it. So, I'm having trouble with why we should put more money into the PCI once we've made that. Did you want to add to that? It wasn't really a question.
I didn't want to interrupt. So, if you think of it not as a number, the PCI not, or the street condition not as a number, but as, there's a cost to maintaining streets, and the higher your PCI, the lower your ongoing cost of maintaining those streets. So, if we were to get a...
So, it is an investment in the future in lowering our costs, just like paying down the pension debt?
Right.
Okay. I think Councilmember, Vice Mayor Jensen said that also effectively. So, maybe I'd be convinced to look at, if it's really an investment that lowers costs in the future, that does make sense. So, I could be convinced to go that way. On the downtown beautification, I'm not really in favor of spending money on the planters. And we've, in the power washing, I can go for more. It needs to be done. What I'm more hesitant is spending sort of this one-time money when I'm hoping we're going to have a successful one-way pilot, and the result comes out, oh, let's do a redesign of our downtown. So, why are we going to go spend, you know, what sounds like a hundred and ten thousand or something, and then halfway through the year decide, you know, the one-way pilot was successful, let's redesign. As Councilmember Jensen said, maybe let's take out some planters and change them into seating. Let's do, maybe we do some new sidewalks that have a seal on it so it stays clean and, you know, the dirty stuff doesn't soak in. I think part of the problem is our sidewalks are old and it's, and they're now porous, so stuff just, you know, goes in them and it's hard to clean. It's like if, when you go in your bathroom or your kitchen, you put a paint on it that has more of a gloss to it, and it's easier to clean. If you put a flat on your kitchen, it's much harder to clean, and I think our sidewalks have kind of gotten that way also. So, rather than trying to add more maintenance to an old corporate building that needs to be replaced, maybe we should be looking at, you know, an upgrade, you know, with our redesign, hopefully a successful pilot and a redesign. So, I'm hesitant to be throwing one-time money at it at this point in time. And I think the other piece that people were talking about was pensions. I agree we should be putting some more of the money into the pension, our general fund pension and OPEB reserve. I don't think all of it should go there. I think that's a little too much. I also would like to see some more going, you know, as I just mentioned, I'm talking about, you know, I'm envisioning a redesign of our downtown, and I think it's going to take more than a million dollars as going forward. Our budgets are getting tighter and tighter, so I'm afraid if we don't, you know, keep adding some money as we go along, we won't have enough to be able to do a full job on that. So, I would like to add some to, as the mayor mentioned, to that fund. I don't know, cut them off, maybe we do six hundred here and then cut the other two and a half. I'm not sure, but that's the way I'm thinking about it.
All right, so I have a question for staff. When we talk about planter boxes, there's the ones on North Santa Cruz that were maintained or are maintained by volunteers, and then there were the ones in the parking lots that were considered to be, needed to be brought up. And I believe that we should make a distinction between the two, because I think there is some consensus about potentially allowing the volunteers to continue with maintaining the ones on North Santa Cruz, but the ones in the parking lots were not separated from the discussion. And is there a separate dollar amount for those? Or is that included in the sixty-five thousand?
So, the discussion that we've been having has been specific to those planter boxes on North Santa Cruz, and we don't have a project for you on the planning boxes around the parking lots that's not included?
Was that part of the original staff report about a month ago when we...
We did not cost them for that report.
Was that just brought forth by the chamber? That was it?
Exactly that.
Okay, thank you. So, what we have to come up with now is dollar amounts. So, I heard everybody, or a majority of people, wanting sidewalk cleaning, or agreeing that sidewalk cleaning is a good idea. So, how much money can go towards sidewalk cleaning? And let me recap. We have two-point-nine million dollars minus five thousand dollars so far. So, we have, Mr. Conway, you can do the math better than me. So, if we can agree, or how could I say it, somebody make a motion on the amount of money we want to contribute to sidewalk cleaning. Let's hear it. Dollar amount. We'll go with Councilmember Specter.
I move that we do power washing for twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars annually.
Second it?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the power washing discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that passes unanimously. So, now, that's two-point-nine minus about thirty-two and a half. Councilmember Seok?
Okay, I'll try a motion. The one-point-nine, that was from the land surplus, I move that that goes to our pension reserve. That will be under discussion by the Finance Committee in June.
Second?
So, we have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, for me.
No.
So, that passes three to two. So, that leaves us with, let's see, thirty-two thousand, a million minus thirty-two thousand. Is that correct? Thirty-two and a half thousand. So, we have a little less than a million dollars left, and I'll make a motion. I'd like to see that go towards the downtown revitalization, the streetscape project. Do I have a second on that?
Can I ask a question for a second?
Yes.
Are you anticipating that that go into the lump sum for the, that we've already allocated a million for, and it could include things like redesign that Councilmember Rennie has talked about, repurposing planter boxes, et cetera, et cetera?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll second.
So, we have a motion and a second on that. Councilmember Seok?
And so, similar, the question I have is more process-oriented. How does one determine what projects get funded with this two-million-dollar fund? And when does that get looked at?
So, at our last strategic priorities, we talked about the need for updating the streetscape of Santa Cruz, and we're looking forward to the results of the parking study and the one-way pilot to help inform that. But ultimately, we would likely need to hire a landscape architect, take all the ideas of the council, such as the ones that have been expressed this evening, other ideas that may come forward from our community, and we would essentially do a master plan and then need to construct that new street. So, it's the beginning of a process, and in your CIP book, you see that we've already created a project, but it's going to be a multi-year project. We need to learn, we need to put aside some money, and then we need to do the actual planning and then construction.
And I was thinking, in the fall, when we get the results of the parking study, as well as the one-way street pilot, that we would probably begin the discussion then. But we have the placeholder for it now. That demonstrates the commitment from the council, and that we will be discussing that later. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
So, it passes four to one. Councilmember Specter dissenting. And I think that covers all the money. So, it's all spent for now. Moving on to council matters. Councilmember Seok?
Actually... Sorry to interject, but we still have the proposed operating budget. We have the proposed CIP, and we also had your consideration on amendment to the general fund reserve policy.
Thank you. I was too eager. Vice Mayor?
I'm going to start with one I hope is easy, that I will make a motion that we approve the amendment to the general fund reserve policy that is contained at page nine of eleven of our staff report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. I will make a motion to approve the CIP budget and the operating budget in the staff report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Councilmember Specter. Sorry, we have a motion and a second.
I need to, what's your motion again?
It's going to approve the CIP budget and the budget in the staff report. It's going to approve the CIP budget and the budget in the staff report, both items with one motion.
Including any changes that our prior motions have?
That is correct. We were just going to get the remainder of those two items, and we had the previous motions that are also already considered.
I'm going to support the motion, but except for CIP Project 8130237, which has to do with Highway 17.
Okay. Councilmember Seok, you had a question or... Okay, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, and Councilmember Specter had the exception. I guess you're not approving it then, or you are approving it?
I am.
Okay, very good. Vice Mayor.
Just a question for whoever is appropriate, number four, and our staff report says, "Consider the town of Los Gatos donation opportunities." Is the council supposed to do something with that?
We just want you to be aware of what the donation needs are for the upcoming year. You do not need to take an action.
Okay, thank you.
And for those who are still in attendance that came in this evening with your requests, it's not the last opportunity. There will be other opportunities for you to bring forward your ideas and apply for whatever grants and things will be available in the future. We will have a revised policy, so thank you for your presentations. Now we can move on to council matters. Councilmember Seok.
Okay, a couple things, if I could bring, let's see, a wrap-up. Since our last previous meeting, there was Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting, Cities Association Legislative Meeting, and the Climate Action Leadership Forum. Of note to everyone, one of the more controversial housing bills, SB 50, has been delayed to be under consideration in 2020 versus this year. And if I can, I'd like for the council to consider, if I have a second or at a future time, our investment policies, and if there's any interest in looking at investing in only, in what they call environmentally socially responsible investments, so.
If this second is just to put it on the council agenda?
Yes.
Sure.
Councilmember Specter.
Oh, I thought we were doing a motion, okay. Sounds like, I'm going to assume it's not a motion.
Well, it was just to put it on a future agenda, right? So you just need a council member and someone to agree to put it on the future agenda. So no motion required.
Done, all right. Let's see, since the last council meeting, we had a CDAC meeting where we considered a potential two-lot subdivision of residential subdivision of property at the end of Wood Road. And also, I attended the reception for Ken Benjamin, where his photographic artwork was displayed on the walls before it was removed, and it was great. Thank you.
All right, since our last regular meeting, we did youth commission interviews. We have many outstanding youth commissioners in our community, as well as many outstanding youth. Never have any difficulty filling those positions. There was the Treatment Plant Advisory Committee where we also adopted the annual budget. There was the West Valley Sanitation District meeting where we also adopted the budget, so I've had a lot of budget this month. Cut a ribbon on Keller Williams Real Estate, their new location on the corner of Lark and University Avenue. There was the Leadership Los Gatos Luncheon, which I attended with Councilmember Seok. And there was also Art in the Council Chambers that I attended with Councilmember Specter. And I forgot to say, last time, I planted a tree, three trees, red bud trees with the students of Blossom Hill Elementary School over in our corporate yard. Vice Mayor.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Rennie.
The morning after our last council meeting, I went out of town, and I came back last night, so I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Manager matters.
Thank you. Tomorrow, we are celebrating all the great work of our Parks and Public Works Department. We have an open house from 9:00 to noon, so please come join us. On June 1st, it's Big Truck Day right in front of the library, and it's also the kickoff for our summer reading program. And then applications for adult commissions are due on June 7th. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I have one more.
Councilmember Seok.
I read through all my notes. One last thing I wanted, I know we made a bunch of motions, but if we could, I'd love some feedback for next year's budget. I think we're all learning as we go. What I'd love to see, I don't know if you need a motion on this, but with future direction, I think what would help me when, on page A1 of the transmittal with the forecasting, is to fine-tune the forecasting. I know I was very nervous looking at the projected deficits that are in 2021 and 2122. Staff assured me that we are very conservative in our revenues, and we always budget at our highest step with salaries. It would make me feel better if we can start to fine-tune those projections so that it doesn't look like we're about to hit deficits and unbalanced budgets in the next three years, so.
Okay, Councilmember Specter.
Since we're doing feedback, I would agree. It would be, I know it's comforting to have a surplus each year that we can apportion, but it would be helpful to my analysis when I'm looking at the budget to have it be more realistic in terms of expenditures and projected revenue.
Okay, thank you very much. This concludes our meeting this evening. We are adjourned.